Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, January 12th, 2021, meeting of the Reno County Commission. Our first order of business this morning is to rise and have pledged allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This morning, we have on the phone Pastor Darrell Peterson with Grace Christian Church. Pastor Peterson, go ahead, please.
It's a great honor that we have this privilege to still praying, so let's pray. Dear heavenly and most gracious Father, we just thank you for the county that we live in, the state that we live in, and Father, the United States. And Father, we just thank you for everything that you are able to do and able to accomplish. And Father, we continue to lift up our county, and we pray blessings over each and every leader, every commissioner, Father. We just thank you for godly wisdom to be used. And Father, we just thank you for the peace of God that passes all understanding, controlling our city and our county. And Father, we just thank you for the meeting today that Father, wisdom is used. And Father, the presence of the Holy Spirit to guide us and lead us. And Father, we just thank you for so many things that, not to look at the bad things, but Father, we look at the good things. We have a blessed year, and we thank you, Father, that this year is going to be greater than 21, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Darrell, for being with us.
Thank you.
Let me mute my phone so that I don't get those embarrassing phone calls like I've had in the past. There we go. Okay, at this time, I'd like to welcome Daniel Friesen being elected for a four-year term on the county commission. And also acknowledge that Commissioner Hurst has just been re-elected for an additional four-year term on the commission, representing Commission Districts Two and Three. I do have, usually I do not have remarks by the chair, but this morning I have written out some remarks that I'd like to read before we start the meeting. We started 2020 on a positive note with the successful hire of Randy Parleyton as county administrator. From that point, last year was challenging, and I did my best to be an effective chairperson. Later this morning, we will elect a new chairperson for the commission. The void left by Bob Bush was a sad and significant challenge. Because of his illness, Bob was forced to miss several meetings late in the summer, leaving two commissioners to conduct business, which often made important decisions and decisions difficult. Bob's passing on October 12th left Reno County and the city of Hutchinson without one of the most loyal, dedicated, and involved community members I've known in a long time. The Republican County, the Reno County Republican Committee was tasked with the appointment of an individual to replace Bob for his unexpired term. Instead of nominating Daniel Friesen, who was elected by the citizens of District Three, to be their commissioner and had attended commission meetings for months in preparation, the committee appointed an individual with a personal agenda that created frustration, promoted the spread of misinformation, and impaired the commission from making progress on many county issues. County commission races have always been partisan, but commissioners work to do what is best for the county regardless of party. Never before has an individual been seated on this commission who worked further to further his own political and medical philosophies at the expense of the citizens of Reno County. The Reno County Health Department is one of the most respected health agencies in the state of Kansas. The health director and interim director, along with their staff, worked tirelessly with the two local clinics, the Hutchinson Medical Center, for months to develop the best course of action to minimize the spread of COVID in Reno County. Routinely, these individuals had to defend themselves from hostile, demeaning criticism from the interim commissioner. This situation made real, meaningful progress unnecessarily difficult. Today, we welcome Daniel Friesen to our board. Daniel, welcome. We're glad to have you here. The three of us will not always agree, as we are not elected by the voters to necessarily agree at all times. I hope, however, that we can return to a mutual, to a philosophy of mutual respect, appreciate each other's ideas and opinions, respect and listen to county employees, and conduct county business with the goal of always doing what is in the best interest of Reno County. I truly hope that with 2021 will be a banner year for the commission. Thank you. Daniel, do you have any remarks to make as your first day on the commission?
Sure, I'd like to, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've had the unique opportunity to sit in the audience for the last six months or so, and I've learned a lot about this commission and about our community. I wish this transition represented a simpler time, a less divisive time, but I'm very aware that these are challenging times for us and for this commission and for our country. And I hope to do my part here with my fellow commissioners. And, you know, I would be also remiss not to acknowledge the honor of sitting here in this chair where Bob finished his distinguished service to our community. Bob served our community with great strength and dignity up to the end, and he left very big shoes to fill. I'm hopeful I will continue his legacy and example of dedication to our community. You know, I ran my campaign with a commitment to reduce taxes, to increase our economic development focus, and work towards efficiencies in government. I think these things are of even greater importance now, but they're even more challenging as well. And, you know, finally, I understand the actions this commission takes regarding COVID-19 are some of the most highly sensitive decisions of this commission in some time. Certainly, there are many good people in our community on all sides of this issue. And you do have my commitment that I will apply a well-informed, objective, reasonable, and fair approach to these decisions and the actions we make together. Of great importance to me are those most vulnerable to life-threatening impacts of COVID-19 and those conditions in our community which risk the viability and continuity of our health systems, which are critical to the safety and welfare of Reno County. This commission and the people of Reno County have my commitment to be respectful of all the opinions that are brought forth here on all matters, including this one. And I will support and especially, and work for those who work tirelessly for the health and safety of our community. Certainly an honor to be here today, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time to introduce myself.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel. Commissioner Hurst, do you have any comments you'd like to make at this point in time?
To say, "Welcome, Daniel."
Thank you.
You know, we've, like Commissioner Sellers said, we sometime have our disagreements, but they're always end up agreeable, whether we really like them or not. We get along. I would just say that it's a privilege for me to be able to serve District Two, as well as the whole county. And I hope that I maintain, and that we can all maintain, the idea of being a servant leader in our position.
Thank you, Commissioner Hurst. Okay, I've asked our health director, Carla Nichols, to be here with our emergency management director, Adam Washauer. The reason I ask you to come, and I think the other two commissioners would like to know as much as you can provide us on the subject of our current vaccination progress and so forth. Some of this information was made available to the commissioners yesterday afternoon. I might read what was in that report. Reno County received 3,100 doses between the Health Department, Prairie Star, and Regional Medical Center. With that, over 2,400 doses have been administered, with the rest of the doses to be administered this week, and then shared with neighboring counties as needed. Vaccine for the general public is not available yet, however, plans for mass distribution is being addressed with the medical collaborative. Either Carla or Karen, I have a couple questions if one or both of you would come. Carla, you've been with us, what, a month now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And whoever can best answer these. I understand from the state, you kind of got in trouble by going with some of the doses to the educational group. I am assuming that they understand that we were trying to do the best we could, and that's, what's passed is passed. From my standpoint, I think those are very necessary and should have been done, so I'm glad we did that. We don't know when we are going to have more doses for the general public. Is that true?
True.
So it's just a total unknown at this point?
Because the KDHE, which is our messenger to us, they do not yet know from the federal government. They are thinking it's going to be the end of February, early March. That's what they know at this time, from the information they're receiving from the federal government. As soon as they know, they'll let us know. But at the same time, we need to make plans so we're ready for it. So whether we get 500 doses, 1,000, 5,000, we are ready. And that's what we're doing now, is we're making plans so we're ready, once we get that vaccine, so we can just hit a button and go.
Okay, and that's what I want to discuss with you a little bit, that button. Okay, before I ask that question, though, what is the standing with the private pharmacies giving doses to the nursing homes?
Do you want to speak to that? Sure. Okay. So what the government did was make contracts with Walgreens and CVS. And so they were contracted to go ahead and get those long-term care facilities taken care of. So we do have a meeting, a standing meeting with the Long-Term Care Facility Administration on Tuesdays, and they have been speaking to that and have been working with Walgreens and CVS to get here. And they specifically come and actually administer to their staff and to the patients.
I understand that, but when is that going to happen?
That is already taking place.
That is already taking, can you give us a feel of, are they half-done?
I would know better. This afternoon, after our meeting, they spoke last week that they were working on that and had arrangements for them to come. I know specifically somebody should have been, I think it was at Bueller Sunshine Home yesterday.
So you feel that in the very near future, that group will be vaccinated?
Yeah, that should be taken care of.
That's, to me, that's so important, because that's our group at the highest risk and so important to get done. So I'm glad that that's moving that fast. Okay, I think my final question is, the next group is going to be our older citizens that are at large, not in nursing homes.
So...
How are we going to do that so that I don't stand in a line like I've seen in Florida for 24 hours? There's got to be a better way to telling Mr. Sellers to show up at 9:15. Are we headed in that direction?
We're working on that collaborative and working at different scenarios as to how that vaccine is going to come in. Generally speaking, you get vaccines in smaller increments, and so we have a couple of providers here in town. We've got Prairie Star Health Center, we've got the Hutchinson Clinic that has the majority of patients here in Reno County. If we get that in in small doses, they would be able to give it, you know, in smaller areas. If we get in a large dose, we're working at, looking at big facilities so that we can incorporate that and work together. So however that comes in, we want to be prepared and, like as Carla said, you know, hit that button, because we are prepared to get that out as soon as we get it in.
Okay, so is that preparedness going to be, that there's a list of an order that you'll call in the first 50 people in this list? Or it just seems like to me that we don't want to, say, run to the clinic of everybody that's over 65?
Yes, sir. We would like it to be an organized approach, but again, that depends on the vaccine supply. We want to make sure that, based upon the supply that we receive, we have an appropriate response, because of course, we want to vaccinate individuals once we have that vaccine. DJ is our data analyst, and he does what's called a little bit of data mining. So he looks at the information in the community, and those individuals, 65-plus in Reno County is 13,000. So that's what we're, then. Then the medical collaborative will look at an appropriate response with the help of Dr. Polly on, how would it be best for us to target that population and within that population to keep them out of the hospital, from what they're seeing? So that's going to be our guidance as we develop this plan.
Okay. So you'll be ready when that vaccine arrives?
Yes, and we will then communicate that plan.
And I'm not trying to be redundant here, but some forms of government are not too prepared to get these things done. And I'm not questioning, I just want to be ready when we get 50 vaccines, 500, 5,000, to get them processed.
And what we would, what we want to do is then inform the community also, and you. This is going to be our response. The only thing we're waiting on is vaccine. So people already know where they're going to be at in the system. So that's going to be the other thing that we work on. Communication is key to all of us, to make sure that we are all informed of what is coming.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners have questions on the processing of vaccine as it comes in?
Only thing I would ask is that, or tell, is that you reinforced looking on our website and the places where they can find the information out, as well as handling it on any other media.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Dr. Polly did have a communication he'd like us to read, if that's okay with you.
Certainly.
Here are his updates. Number one, trend. Outpatient and inpatient COVID-19 cases have plateaued the last two weeks. We have seen a 25% to 30% decrease in outpatient COVID-19-like illness presentations from our peak last month, but we are still seeing community members much greater than we had experienced in the late fall. Our outpatient systematic positive test rate remains well above 30%, indicating that COVID-19 is primarily circulating illness in the community. Inpatient numbers have recently declined to a manageable caseload, a delayed reflection in the above outpatient trends. This has been a welcome reprieve from our inpatient providers. This also allows for keeping non-COVID-19 illnesses and traumas that were previously needing to be transferred elsewhere. We have yet to see much of any influenza. There are enormous benefits from getting our COVID-19 cases down prior to a large influx of influenza within the community. A large census, a full census of COVID-19 with the addition of influenza cases would be nearly unmanageable for our region healthcare systems. Now, number two, therapies. It is now common knowledge that Hutch Reno County has become a leader in the usage of monoclonal antibodies for outpatient treatment of high-risk individuals with COVID-19. These therapies, in early studies, were shown to decrease the risk of hospitalization for this high-risk group by nearly 70%. This, they received EUA this fall, thus, they received EUA this fall. Interim updated clinical data regarding these therapies is suggesting benefit beyond what was found in those initial studies. Our medical team is working directly with the combined HHS and DOD Operation Warp Speed to assist with statewide advocacy for these therapies. Efficient, effective use of these therapies beyond Reno County will be of benefit in the effort to offload the local health systems, as Hutch Regional Medical Center serves as a regional hospital for many of our surrounding counties as well as western Kansas. Three, mitigation. Discontinuing our current mitigation measures at this time would be premature and regrettable. Keeping the line, especially now that schools are resuming, is the only proven way to suppress a rebound of cases, hospitalizations, and death in the community. Four, immunizations. Reno County, via the medical collaborative that includes the Reno County Health Department, is poised to efficiently minister vaccines, once received, in a just and equitable manner. The planning and the appropriate team is in place, ready to go into action upon procurement of the next vaccine supply. The implementation of vaccine distribution is greatly dependent on the volume of vaccines that is received. Closed, tightly monitored administration will be needed if only small batches of vaccine are received. Open vaccine clinics will be considered if the vaccine supply is enough to justify such an operation. The team is ready to pivot quickly, based upon the supply that is received. Thank you. Scott Polly, MD.
Clarification of the, I believe you said, over 65 population in Reno County is 13,000?
Yes, sir.
That would include the nursing home residents?
Yes.
Karen, any idea of that number, 2,000, 3,000?
Honestly, I do not know. I would have to get a census from the nursing homes. I could do that, though.
You might try to talk about that this afternoon.
Sure.
Questions from the commissioners on these two ladies?
Yeah, excuse me, I've got a couple questions. And I wanted to echo Chairman Sellers' comments. I appreciate the proactive nature of the vaccination process thus far and getting it out to anybody that wants it, even if it, you know, goes outside of general guidance. I have a question in regards to our long-term care facilities as well, and maybe, maybe we could, at some point, get a sit rep on their status as far as vaccination percentage. That's a pretty important data point for me, and just understanding at what point has our community reached kind of a vaccination of the most vulnerable. So if we could, if we could add that, if the rest of the commission agreed, I think that would be really important. Also, just in regards to, you know, how we get the vaccinations out, I've read some information that there's maybe a larger-than-expected percentage of individuals declining immunization. Do we have that particular data point? Or can we track that data point in the future?
We can look at that, but I don't think that we will have that readily available as we're giving it. You know, generally speaking, when you look at flu vaccines, you can look, you know, past the year and figure out how many, because it comes in increments. But it is something that we're looking at. And we will pull that information out as much as we can.
So is it possible just to notate whether a person declines or doesn't, and report that back to the commission?
So a person, like generally speaking, if people will come in to get the vaccine, I'm not necessarily speaking to someone who doesn't want the vaccine. Now, in the nursing home, obviously, you have, you know, a person that you are asking. So that ratio, we can certainly find out.
Okay. And I guess I'm just thinking in terms of planning, you know, it seems like part of the issue that's going on is we have a lot of vaccines and then sometimes not enough people to administer them to, and so understanding at what point we're going to run out of a certain class and making sure the next class is available. And just, I was also wondering on that, it seems like some people really want to get the vaccine. Is there an ability for them to sign up? So when the general public gets the opportunity, those that feel like they're most vulnerable in that next grouping could, kind of, we could kind of shift towards knowing who wants it versus just asking everybody who wants it?
I think that is things that we're certainly working on, and that's when we get into those numbers and minding down the fact that we have 13,000 Reno County citizens. Now, we're also looking at a population that feeds into Reno County's clinical settings, and those are their primary care providers. At this point in time, the pharmacies generally help with flu vaccine, and that is recommended for anybody aged six months and older, and a lot of those folks get that vaccine at the pharmacies. We have not heard that they have the vaccine coming at either. I've heard from a pharmacy that said, you know, "If you give us some doses, we would help administer those." So they have not heard that they are getting them as well. We are looking at all different ways, and really what we have in the past is how the flu vaccine has come in and how we will offer that to citizens. We've taken some notes through the Health Department, but, you know, if we have a list of 13,000 people calling, that's not much of a list. So we are working on different ways. We're looking on putting a town hall together so they can explain the vaccine a little bit more. And then just trying to push out that communication as to when we know, because we have several folks calling all over to every health entity, asking, "When can I get my vaccine?" So what we do have in Reno County is a lot of excitement and people wanting to get that vaccine, especially those in that 65-plus year. So trying to work on that information and getting that out.
Yeah, and it seems like if, you know, if we could get them on a list somewhere, maybe they would stop calling, you know? So I appreciate, excuse me, all the hard work here. I know it's hard to organize something that comes to you unorganized, so I know, I know it's a monumental challenge, what you're doing, so certainly appreciate that. And I just finally would echo Commissioner Hurst's comments, that if we can continue to communicate as much as we can what our plan is, we almost have to over-communicate, it seems like, at this point. So thank you, guys, for all of your hard work. Appreciate it very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hurst, do you have any?
I don't have any. Thank you both. Adam, you got anything you want to contribute this morning?
I have just a few things for your commissioners. Adam Washauer, Emergency Management Director. I did want to talk about the State Finance Council extended the state declaration, disaster declaration, so it's now set to expire on January 26, 2021, unless that is again extended, which I can see that happening. We are still one of nine counties that has a non-congregate sheltering facility inside the state. Currently, we are sheltering two positive individuals and zero non-positive individuals. I will tell you that as county, we have split up into more of an ICS structure, so there are some individuals that work for Carla that are really focused on the planning and distribution of this flu vaccine. The goal behind the planning is so we can be transparent, fair, and equitable to all the citizens in Reno County. Reno County has really taken a leadership role, especially with a lot of our surrounding counties, on this vaccine, so we want to develop our own plan so we can push that out to the community to show exactly what we're doing. And that's in the works right now. One of the things they're working on is trigger points, what's going to trigger an open pod, so it's not, so it's like Chairman Sellers talked about, you're not standing in line forever. What's some sort of registration process look like? And that's, those are all still in the planning phases. I think that plan will be completed hopefully later this week and put in front of the commission maybe next week, but that plan is being devised right now. Commissioner Friesen talked about numbers and how we can track some of those numbers. I think if we work with DJ, our analyst, one of the populations that we can track, percentage of people who received the vaccine versus refused it would be our first responder population. We know exactly how many of those there are in the county. It's been offered to all our first responders. We can probably put a percentage on there, how many received it versus how many didn't, so we can work on that this week. With that, I'll open it up for any questions from the commission.
I just concur with Commissioner Friesen said, that I think data's important here, and as much data as the group can put together and put out to the public's important.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Shonda, do we have anybody outside for public comment this morning? What kind of number do we have outside today? Just one? Okay.
Okay. Please introduce yourself, name an address, and you have up five minutes to address the council.
Yes, Buck Wells, 212 West Avenue B, Hutchinson, Kansas. Sorry, it's a little quiet out there, so I'm going to try to talk right into the mic. I just, first of all, I'll say, you know, Happy New Year to all you and welcome Commissioner Friesen. And I'll just hop right into it. You know, I'm here to, again, just talk about that there's a large group of us in the community that would like to see the Health Order twenty-dash-oh-five expire and also opt out of the mask mandate. I will say one thing, I do, you know, the Reno County Republicans did nominate Dr. Stephan, and I don't think, he might have came off a little harsh, and so that is definitely, I understand that opinion, but there, we have not presented any misinformation. We have not presented any, anything that's not backed by science and data, and so I'm definitely going to disagree with Scott Pauley and his recommendations to keep the mitigation strategies because the, there's science on both sides showing that masks don't work and they work. I think the science is clear that in the only rein of MICE trial that has been about COVID, the masking versus non-masking, has shown that had no effect. So, you know, the point is that the policies really have not slowed the spread of the virus, and I'm thrilled that the clinic is, has been recognized as doing a good job on outpatient treatment. I think it's, you know, it's been, I think they just had that therapy in the last month, month and a half or so, so that is good. That has definitely been an opinion, I'm not here to talk about that. But the virus, again, if you look on the Reno County dashboard, you scroll all the way to the bottom, which we have a great dashboard, by the way, that's very easy to read, and I do appreciate that. You scroll all the way to the bottom of the dashboard, and you see that, you see that graph that shows active cases, and it shows like a bell curve, okay? That's called gum pert's function. This virus has just naturally done what viruses do. Gum pert's function explains the natural life cycle of the virus. It is slow at the end and beginning, or, excuse me, the beginning and the end of the virus, and a rapid in the middle, which we saw. We peaked, according to the numbers of just active cases, we peaked right around November thirtieth. And it's gone down kind of rapidly, and then it's slowing right now, which is, I think, what CARLA said. And so, anyway, I think now would be a fantastic time to really let that health order expire. You know, we've, you guys have, we've had a couple of them now, back-to-back, you know, and again, I don't think that the, that the policies really helped slow the spread. And right now, we have a mask mandate. If you didn't see, the state legislator is not, they're not even mandating masks at the Capitol, which is very interesting. I think that speaks volumes there as well. And again, you know, people are wearing masks whether they're mandated or not. One more thing, real quick, I forgot to mention this, I skipped right over this. There was an article done by computer scientists and, and data, and computer analysis, excuse me, and they gathered all the information on fifty states on, and they broke it down to mask mandated states versus non-mandated states. They went through all this data, May first through December fifteenth. They even, they even broke it down to if some states had a mask mandate like Kansas, or didn't have a mask mandate like Kansas, and we got one in in July and then afterwards. And what it showed is that there was ten more cases per a hundred thousand, per day, of people that had the mask mandates in. So again, you know, you could even, there's probably lots of reasons for that, and you can even say that the masking actually kind of increased the spread, but I don't even want to go there because they don't have, that's just my opinion. But again, this data, which is important to look at because the sciences, you can look at science both ways, but the data, it shows that the mandates don't work, okay? And they're not enforceable. I mean, and that's another, you know, another thing about this is that we have these mandates that aren't enforceable, and then you, you know, you go and you mandate something that, you know, people feel very strongly about their constitutional rights.
Mr. Wells, your five minutes is up.
Okay, thank you. So again, I would appreciate that you guys look at that. That is, I think, expiring, if I saw that correctly, next Monday. And again, I appreciate the time and Happy New Year.
Thank you. Shonda, anybody else who wants to address the commission this morning? If not, we'll move on to determine any additions or revisions to the agenda. Do either of you commissioners have items that you would like to place on the agenda today?
I have none.
None.
None?
None.
Okay, county administrator?
No.
Okay, so we'll leave the agenda as printed. We'll move on to the consent agenda, item six. Consists of vouchers in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-eight cents. CRF vouchers totaling three hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents. Change orders for 2020 of nine ninety-two through nine ninety-two and for 2021 of one and four through six. Resolution 2021 dash oh-one designating depositories for Reno County funds. Resolution 2021 oh-two designating the Hutchinson News as the official county newspaper. Resolution 2021 oh-three vacating a thirty-foot-wide Future Street easement located at twenty-three, twenty-five East Fifty-Sixth Avenue and nineteen hundred East Fifty-Fourth Avenue. Item G, appoint Charles Chuck Smith as Little River Township Treasurer. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on any of these items by the commission? I'd like to ask Mr. Partington, we have still a fairly large dollar amount for CRF vouchers. Are we close to getting that done? Our intent was to get it done before the end of the year, and I guess the state gave, federal government gave some more time for these expenditures, but our intent was to get it done. So are we close?
We are a lot closer. I think we have maybe a million dollars left, but I believe most of those invoice, or bills, invoices aren't coming in, so we are very close.
Do you want to also, if I may ask, you want to cover the COVID-CV dispersments, too?
That'll be at another meeting.
Next.
Got some issues with that. We need to clarify.
Right.
Okay, there's no other discussion? Please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Moving on to business items. Item A is the appointment of Jack Martin to a three-year term on the Planning Commission beginning retroactively on January first, twenty twenty-one, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. County planners here to propose this?
Mark? Mark Von Achen, county planner. I don't really have a prepared statement, Commissioner. I will let you know that Planning Commission's been down one member since late summer. We had one member resign. Mr. Jack Martin saw an advertisement, I believe, on either social media or in the paper, contacted me about the position being open, and I, since then, forwarded him an application. He has filled that out, and I have submitted his name for your consideration today. So really, if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer, and I tried to cover some of the background in my agenda request to you, but certainly I can discuss in greater detail if you want.
I support the motion for the appointment of Jack. Jack's history is a long history of being on the City Planning Commission and also on the, Mark, what is it, the joint city-county?
At the time, we had a joint subdivision committee consisting of members of the City Planning Commission and members of the County Planning Commission. That has since been dissolved, but yes, he was, I believe, a member of that one.
And I believe, due to the rules of the makeup of the Planning Commission, we needed to appoint someone who does not live inside the city, which Jack does not live inside the city limits.
Correct. Right now, we have three members that are living within the city limits of any city. The Planning Commission bylaws state that a majority of the citizens comprising the Planning Commission must live outside of an incorporated city, so the person that you would select would have to be outside of the city limits.
Is there a motion to appoint Jack Martin to a term? I would make that motion.
And a second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just had one question. I support the motion. Just curious, generally speaking, how these positions are selected? Is it, does the staff typically review the applications and make the recommendation? Does it go to the Planning Commission? Or how does the selection process work? Just for my knowledge.
Staff doesn't really have any input in who is selected to the Planning Commission. That's really strictly up to the county commissioners and stuff. There's all, no set method or policy in place. I think typically, you know, you'd like to have at least two people from each district, but the current makeup of the Planning Commission is not under that scenario, but they know that the members do not go to the Planning Commission for any recommendation. They strictly are a county commissioner decision. If I do receive an application, then I forward that application on to administration for dispersal to the commission for consideration.
Daniel, if I could interject this. Normally, there are, each commissioner would nominate someone from their district if that district, if their present makeup is from that district, or we ask everyone to throw in names from that district. And normally, there's two from the city and two from your district, three, and because of the size of District Two, there's three from the District Two. And so that's normally how it's done, and the reason this needed an extra one this year from outside is because one of the members who normally lived outside of a city moved into a city, and so his address became the city, so we needed a, needed someone from outside.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
And that person moved into the, what, the metropolis of Turon?
Metropolis of Turon.
Okay. And to me, that's a little hard to fathom, that he now becomes a city member, but that's the rules, so. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on this? If not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, item B, purchase of two Ford interceptors from Midwest Ford, sixty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, presented by Captain Levi Blumenhurst. Captain?
Good morning. Levi Blumenhurst, captain of the Reno County Sheriff's Office. I've presented some items. Just to speak to those briefly, we are requesting this year to purchase two, 2021 Ford interceptor SUV hybrids. That's the agenda item request we're on right now. The next one will be for a 2020 Ford F-150 police responder pickup truck. In years past, we have requested to purchase four SUVs to replace four vehicles. This year, we scaled that back to two due to the climate of where things at and trying to be responsible for the amount of monies that the county has. Last year, we tried the hybrid vehicles. We already had four 2020s that were a conventional engine, so we wanted to purchase four 2020 hybrids to compare those. The 2020 hybrids did an exceptional job. On average, we saved about three miles per gallon the entire time those are running, but almost more noticeable than the miles-per-gallon savings that we've noticed are the engine hour savings, because those go into, when they're in idle, the gas engine will shut off the majority of the time and only kick back on when it needs to recharge the different components inside the vehicle. And this has been a huge savings. Maintenance-wise, the automotive shop has fully endorsed the hybrids. They believe they work well. They have not seen any extra maintenance issues. We have had some Ford issues, but they've been body-stuff, and they've been dealt with by Ford, nothing dealing with the actual hybrid part of the car. Have we had to take it up to Ford or had it been worked on by the shop, to my knowledge? They've been really good vehicles for us.
Captain, has your department, due to COVID pandemic, had more or less miles driven this year or the same?
I did not run the numbers ahead of time to get that. I would guess it's pretty close to the same because we're still patrolling the entire county and trying to get out to the cities. The one thing that may have been different, there was a portion of time last year where we responded to more calls by phone than actually responding to the address and talking to the person, but in most of those cases, deputies would do it, and then they would still be patrolling their beat, going around the area, checking the county.
Okay. Is there a motion? Go ahead.
Just a second here. I would like to invite, if the sheriff is amiable to this, or you are, that you have the opportunity to go out on the training track and...
I have a hard time driving, Ron.
You don't drive. You don't drive on this. You ride. You ride.
Yes, we, those cars all have three passenger seats, so we can fill those up pretty well and put you in with a good driver. If there is interest in that, this year, we are going to be doing driver training for all patrol deputies, so I would invite commissioners.
It's an opportunity to see this interceptor at work, because it's quite a vehicle. And the interceptors made for this particular driving conditions that the sheriff does?
Yes, sir. Yes, both the interceptor SUV and the police F-150 are designed, equipped for law enforcement work.
Good. Thank you for that comment, Commissioner Hurst, even though I might not take you up on that.
You could relive a little bit of your younger years.
Is there a motion to approve item seven-B, the purchase of two Ford interceptors?
Is there a reason there's, these two items are separated?
They are at this point in time, so we need to consider them separately.
I would make the motion.
Okay.
I would second.
Any further discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Item C, purchase of twenty-one, 2020 Ford F-150 responder pickup. Think you've already talked about it. Is there any questions of the captain in regard to this item? Not, is there a motion to approve?
I would move to approve the purchase of one 2020 Ford F-150 responder pickup from Midwest Ford at a total cost of eighteen thousand, nine dollars after trade.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there's any further discussion, if not, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hurst?
Yes.
Mr. Friesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
One comment that I would like to make to the county commissioners, curator, and the other commissioners, it's my feeling, and then certainly the other two commissioners need to chime in on this, but if I understand this purchase that's just been approved is part of the annual budget of the Sheriff's Department, does not exceed the annual budget and is an item in that budget, and it seems like to me that we could move these things to the consent agenda. Is there any thoughts, Ron? I know you like cars and like to read the descriptions, so...
The reason I prefer to have it as a business item is just because there might be an opportunity for questions regarding the purchases and the price and so forth and the needs, and it's just a way for the public to... And it's just a way for the public to hear and interact a little bit with the purchase of, of dollars of this size.
I understand that point of view. That's a good point of view. Also, lets the captain be seen by the community, so.
I hear where you're coming from on this.
I, I think you're right and I'm right on this item. But I, I do think it's, it's good to have the sheriff's department in front of the commission. So, for that matter, maybe we should leave it alone, so I withdraw that request.
We can have a further visit about that with the sheriff and, and patrol captain. It's their preference, too.
And, and, you know, maybe we could even move to, I know the county administrator's moving more to, towards a director's report to the commission and all, and maybe those things could be included in the director's report, which would, in this case, would be the sheriff. Okay, moving on to Item D, reorganization of the Board of County Commissioners. Is there a motion for the chairmanship for the 2021 year? Not hearing any, I will move to nominate Commissioner Hirst to be chairman.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that?
Would you consider a second term as chairman, sir?
Why? It's always been, and correct me, Joe, Joe, you're our historian, here to move the chairmanship around to the various commissioners. You're elected for a four-year term. It hasn't been a, and I don't want to use the word political sparingly. It's been a, a right of being on the commission to be the chairman at certain times and so forth, so.
I understand.
For that reason, I think that we should consider moving it and not putting my name in nomination. Do you understand my reasoning?
I do.
Any other discussion? Please call the roll.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, Commissioner Freezen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sellers?
Yes. I'd like to nominate Daniel Freezen, Commissioner Freezen, as vice chairman.
I would second that.
Any discussion? I think the vice chairman's in an important role, because it takes the place if the chairman's absent and gets him prepared for chairmanship in the, in the future years.
I agree.
It's a, do you plan on being absent very many meetings, chairman?
I don't plan on it, but, but if the occasion arises, I'm sure that Commissioner Freezen would do an excellent job.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Hirst?
Yes.
Mr. Freezen?
Abstain.
Mr. Sellers?
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the county administrator's report. Mr. Barnington, if you'd like to address this, please.
Okay, thank you. Included in the agenda packet is the financials, year-to-date summary of the funds and departments. This does go through the year-end, but I want to point out that there are still encumbrances that are not included in here. And then, period thirteen expenditures and revenues, or mainly expenditures, I guess, that are not, so these are not final numbers. I just wanted to give you a good, I guess, snapshot of what it looks like right now. General Fund looks in good shape. Health, Health Fund looks in good shape. Solid Waste is in good shape. Really, almost all of the funds look in really good shape. And then, on the expenditures, year-to-date or through the year, the total percent of budget used in the General Fund, there, kind of, there is an asterisk, because if you just look at the total numbers, it looks like we've only spent sixty-two percent of the budget. But there is the carryover money, the cash balance that gets budgeted, that's included in that. So, if you take that amount out, eighty-four percent of the budget has been spent. Now, again, that doesn't include period thirteen, which includes the last pay, pay period for county employees and some expenses coming in and encumbrances. The, I will point out, Donna, the county clerk, sent me an email this morning to explain, if you look at the election, that budget went over. We had more ballots this year. It was a large election year, so there was more spending in that area. So, that kind of explains, explains that line item. I wanted to see if you had any questions about the financials.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Randy, the, when you said we hadn't, I thought I heard you say we had, we had spent eighty-five percent. Does, does that mean that we don't have everything that we spent in 2020 in these numbers yet, or what?
Correct.
Okay.
That means out of the amended budget or the budget that was in place, eighty-five percent has been spent in that, in that fund, I believe. But there are still bills that took place in 2020 that will be accounted for, and I think through February is when we get the bills, but they were for purchases or encumbrances made in 2020.
So, you would expect the ending balance here on the right, on page one of the summary report, to go down, so.
Yes, it will go down.
Well, it, it's a, appears to be a very good number, you know, being up, you know, almost, almost eight million dollars from, from the beginning balance. I know that'll go down. It'd be interesting to see, just further to the right, a percentage of, you know, up or down.
Okay.
This, it's, this is, this is an interesting report and it looks, looks like we're running the county fiscally very well, so thank you for that.
Randy, in regard to the, the county financial report, on the news media, we hear clear across the country so many health departments out of budget, can't work because they don't have the monies to, to do their mission and so forth. It appears that our health department is in an adequate position. Can you discuss why we might be different? Or what, what situation makes us different than numerous places around the country?
What has helped Reno County's health val, health fund balance, I think, is some of the CARES Act money. So, as Leslie's worked with the health department and reimbursed some payroll expenses, that helps. And with the overtime and additional staff, it kind of helps the fund a little bit. Now, the concern for 2021 is probably similar to what other counties or states may see in their health departments. The CARES Act, the amount that the health department receives separate from the twelve point six that Reno County received, they can spend through 2021, but they have, but there's still going to be overtime, the amount of hours that our health department works, their staff, and purchases, so that fund balance may go down relatively quickly if we don't have additional income coming in. So, right now, with, they've done a great job of watching their expenditures on things that they could delay. Personnel has been helped by the CARES Act. That's how I would explain it.
Isn't it, also, we, we were very fortunate in, in being able to apply and get quite a few grants this last year in the health department. Do you anticipate any changes in that area? I, I know it's, that's difficult to even think about, but I was just, I'm just relating the fact that we did get some pretty good grants last year.
Yes, and I believe the health department staff over there will continue to apply for and get grant money, grant funds, and so I think we'll be okay there. It'll continue. I don't see that dropping off. We are healthy in the fund balance. I think we'll be okay in 2021. But again, that depends on how much overtime and how many additional staff that we have in place right now that were grant-funded. When those grants run out, what happens with the, with those temporary staff members?
I have one other comment based on Commissioner Hirst's comments about grants. I think it would be great to acknowledge the departments do obtain grant funding and put that in a report somewhere yearly. I mean, that's, that's money that somebody will get. And if, and if they get it for Reno County, I think that should be acknowledged.
Okay.
I want to thank you and the department heads and the employees of all of Reno County for the drastic change we made last year with anticipation of less revenue and the ability to still consider getting all those services done. And I think they all did an exceptional job.
Thank you. I'll pass that to staff.
Good point, Commissioner Hirst. Randy, do you have other things?
Yes, I just wanted to give you an update, just so you're aware. On Thursday of this week, the pre-construction meeting for the courthouse improvements takes place in the morning from ten to noon here in this room. And then, in the afternoon, there's going to be a question and answers available for courthouse departments about how they may be impacted by that construction for the courthouse improvements. On the same day in the morning, from eleven to noon, is the landfill bid openings for their project. So, for that, we'll have more information in the coming weeks of what that cost is. I'm going to bring that up. And then, then just to state that the study session for the wind energy regulations is planned for January nineteenth at four P.M. at the Public Works Facility. And we will have that available on the Reno County YouTube page. Because of the size of the room and COVID restrictions, there won't be any guests allowed, but we will televise for the Open Meetings Act, Kansas Open Meetings Act. Any questions?
Okay, you both have that down on your calendar.
What was the four o'clock?
January nineteenth, four o'clock at Public Works Building.
Just didn't have the location down.
It'll be at Public Works Facility.
And then, would you comment on the fact that we're anticipating a study planning session on January thirtieth with the commission and you?
January thirtieth, yes, on Saturday morning at nine A.M., there's going to be a study session for the county commission to discuss goals and 2021, what they want, expect for the year. I will get back with you for the exact location. If we had it here, we don't have security. Doors are locked. So, we, I will get back with the exact location that will be, that we can have at another county facility.
Mr. Chairman, one, one question going back to, to the scope of the project for the courthouse. Can you, can, I, I know, I know you guys talked about it last part of the year, but could you brief again on, on what the scope of the project is for the courthouse?
Courthouse improvements is weatherization of the building, dome improvements, earthquake damage, plaster repairs, so a lot of what happened in the earthquakes, and then window replacements.
Okay. Is, you know, one thing that I, I noticed coming into the courthouse, it's a little unusual, is, you know, everything's kind of uniformed except for, I think at some point, we replaced the front windows of the entrance, and they're black and everything else is kind of uniformed with the rest of the building. Is that, is that going to be changed, or is that still the same? This is kind of, from a historical building, if you look at it, it kind of sticks out.
Okay, yeah, the other win, the windows for the rest of the building will stay with, won't change much from the look that they have now for historical purposes.
Your comment is more on the doorway into the meeting.
Yeah, it is, for some reason, black was chosen and, and all the framing of the rest of the building is kind of a, I think, a grayish or something.
Yeah, the entrance isn't part of being upgraded or changed.
This is an observation.
Consider in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, county commission reports or comments. We'll start with Commissioner Hirst.
Just this week, we received a notice that Harvey County Commissioner Ron Crable had passed away. And he was an integral part of the Quad County meetings from Harvey County and got to know him through the Kansas Association of Counties and enjoyed his comments and his conversation with him. So, I just wanted to recognize the passing of Commissioner Rod, Ron Crable. And I appreciate the, the questions and the comments, especially the clarifications that Joe was, provided us with regards to the relationship between KDAG, our Reno County Health Department, and the Board of Health, which is the county commissioners. I thought it was excellent clarification and I learned some things. So, I'm glad the question was asked and, and appreciated the thorough explanation. Thank you, Joe. That's all.
At all. Commissioner Freezen?
Commissioner, I had, I had one, one, one point, and maybe it's an agenda item for next meeting. As you know, a bit of an affinity for technology and, and I, I think there are ways. I mean, a couple of things that I've noticed being here. One is this room is, is not ideal for our current situation. And, and I've talked to Randy just briefly about whether there's another place in the building. It sounds like those, those options are limited. But whether we can have kind of a more open room for our meetings. The, the second is, you know, creating some permanent technology improvements to this particular meeting that ensures everybody has an opportunity to present to this commission. I think there's still probably some people that would rather not come in person. And it's, it's pretty common, I think, for a commission our size to have the ability for people to, to call in or, or be on a screen and, and present that way. And I think we, we have, I think, the technology kind of here, but I think if we, we made it kind of more permanent and more, you know, plan on using it every week, I think we could use, use the technology even more than we do today. When we just use it when we need it, it can be a little clunky. I think we've seen that in, in some past meetings. So, just increasing that use on a, on a weekly basis or, or semi-monthly basis would, would be a priority I would like to see this commission work on.
Could you maybe refine those thoughts and bring them up at our planning meeting that we're going to have in detail? I think that would be appropriate. Other items, Commissioner?
I'm good. Thank you, Chairman.
Don't believe I have anything. If there's no other items of business today, we'll adjourn this meeting.
I would like to say one thing, Commissioner Sellers. I thought you did an excellent job in your position as a chair and management of the meeting, as well as, as bringing things up and, and letting people know that they are really doing a great job here. And I just thank you for your efforts.
Yeah, I concur. Good job.
Thank you.